Thank you.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louie Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a couple of proclamations here. The first one. I'll read these off. This is whereas every two and a half minutes, a person in the United States is diagnosed with lung cancer and whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths for women and men and whereas lung cancer screening save lives and advocacy and increased awareness will result in more high-risk individuals getting screened and whereas public support for research funding will result in new treatments and better methods of detection and whereas Lung Force is a national initiative by the American Lung Association to defeat lung cancer. Now therefore, I Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim the second week in May as turquoise takeover week in the City of Moore and encourage all residents to learn more about lung cancer risk factors and early detection. Thank you. And is Brittany Mon here? Would you like to come and get this? I guess I need to sign it. There you go. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Just have her come on up here.
Yeah, if you want to come up.
Hit a good one.
You can have the mayor hand it to you again, too, if you want.
No, I just hand it once.
No, you don't have to stand up, but just do that. Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next proclamation, this is a long one, is as the City of Moore's future prosperity depends on nurturing the health development of more than sixteen thousand children currently living, growing, and learning within our city limits and whereas research shows that safe nurturing relationships and stimulating stable environments improve brain development and child well-being while neglectful or abusive experiences and unstable or stressful environments increase the odds of poor childhood outcomes and whereas the abuse and neglect of children can cause severe costly and lifelong problems affecting all of society, including physical and mental health problems, school failure, and criminal behavior and whereas research also shows that parents and caregivers who have social networks and know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children and whereas individuals, businesses, schools, faith-based, and community organizations make a child's, or excuse me, make children a top priority and take action to support the physical, social, emotional, educational development and competency of all children and whereas during the month of April, Cleveland County Children First, a child abuse prevention program is supported by Oklahoma State Department of Mental Health will be engaging with individuals and communities throughout the metro area in a coordinated effort to prevent child abuse and neglect by promoting the awareness of healthy child development, positive parenting practices, and the type of support families needed within our communities and whereas I encourage all residents of Moore to recognize that prevention starts with each of us. Now therefore, I Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim that the month of April 2022 is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Okay, who's going to put this one? Okay, Michelle Lim, thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Now, don't go beating up any children.
Open it.
Open it.
Oh, yeah.
Sticky note on there.
Sorry. All we had was the yellow part showing. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Item two is a consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 4, 2022. Item B is receive the minutes of the special city council meeting held March 21, 2022. Item C is approve the minutes of the regular parks ward meeting held March 1, 2022. Item D is approve the amendment to the contract with Meachack and Associates for the completion of a letter of map revision for the Little River Park and Drainage Channel. Item E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2021-2022 in the amount of $2,372,342.79.
Make a motion that we approve the consent docket.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote on the consent docket?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is consider approval of ordinance number 1002-22 amending Part 9, Chapter 11, Records and Towing Services, Section 9-1101 through 9-11010, excuse me, by adding definitions, adding inspections of requirements, defining processes for suspension and revocation of city licenses, limiting onsite vehicle storage, adding site requirements for storage yards, and providing for a one-year amortization period, establishing a rotation log agreement, establishing process for the removal of suspension from rotation log, and repealing Sections 9-1111 through 9-1112, providing for severability, and providing for repealer.
Mayor and Council, this item was started as a citizen complaint, multiple citizen complaints on certain wrecker yards within Moore city limits. When we received those complaints, I did meet with the Moore Police Department along with the city clerk and the assistant city attorney to discuss the ordinance and improvements to the ordinance that could be made to make the wrecker services and impound yards more compatible with this type of suburban development that we're seeing. David, if you could pull up the... So, in reviewing what we did, I believe I came to you, it might have been a year ago, talking about some of the ideas that we had and unfortunately, we weren't able to implement all the ideas such as simplifying the process for the customer and adjusting our fee schedule. Those improvements really just, when we looked at other cities, our fees are comparable or on the higher end of what the other cities charge, so we wouldn't want to make any changes there and the process is what it is. So unfortunately, the citizens still have to make a couple of stops to retrieve a vehicle. However, we were able to change some of the ordinance, which I'm going to go over right now. So, the license renewal date, we propose to change from April 30 to January 1 of each year. We think that this will make the renewal process easier for the wrecker services to remember. It would make it easier for city staff to administer. It's in a slower time of year. And just for some reference, when we first began this project, out of the seven wrecker services we had, only one was currently licensed. All the others had not turned in their paperwork and fees for the renewals. Another problem that we are having stems with the storage yards of these wrecker services. They're simply too full with vehicles that may not move for years and with the full lots, then they begin to overflow outside of the fenced-in area into parking lots. In industrial areas, this has never really been, generated a lot of citizen complaints. However, we're now seeing more of these wrecker services locate on major arterial roadways that are used as commuter paths for residents. Also, we're beginning to see a lot more residential development around these wrecker yards. So we're beginning to get a lot more complaints. So, we would propose an annual inspection of storage yards where a member of the Community Development Department and Police Department would go out and do an inventory of the vehicles to make sure that there's, the vehicles are coming in and going out. So in other words, they're not sitting there for years. We would like to see a time limit of one year for a vehicle being stored, except in extenuating circumstances. We do understand that there's going to be some circumstances where it will have to be longer than a year due to litigation or other similar activities. In that case, we don't want to get involved in that situation. And also, the proposed change would include a more concrete process for a license suspension and revocation. Currently, there is no avenue in the code for a suspension or revocation of a license for a wrecker service. And this would create that process and we would give a 10-day notice where then they would meet in front of a panel made up of a member from the Community Development Department, city clerk, city attorney's office, police department, and we could go over the facts. And whatever the facts in the situation is, the panel could decide whether it's a suspension or revoking the license. Any sort of stipulations that might come with getting the wrecker service back into compliance to then become an active license again. There, we do also propose some storage yard regulations. Right now, the fencing regulations for the storage yard are, all it says is you have to have a site-proof fence. We would propose that the fence have to be in compliance with our exterior property maintenance fencing requirement that basically says it's free of any dents, rust spots. You can't have panels that are falling down, et cetera. And storage yard parking is also, as I stated before, another really big issue. We would propose that all the stored vehicles must be stored inside the storage yard fencing, so there could be no overflow parking. And loading and unloading of the vehicles should take place inside the storage yard. For storage yard site improvements, we would propose that no other automotive business be on the same lot as a storage yard. This, in our opinion, promotes salvage yards and other unsavory activity that's not allowed by the zoning ordinance. So, it's easier to just eliminate that conflict. However, we do understand that there are certain situations where the wrecker would have to do some sort of maintenance of those vehicles. So we want to make sure that they can comply with all state requirements. Another improvement would be that paved customer parking would be required for all wrecker and towing services approved after the passage of this ordinance. Today, we don't have that requirement in city code and under no circumstance could the wrecker yard, regardless of when it was approved, be allowed to discharge or have released mud, dirt, sediment from their site. That's a stormwater issue that needs to be taken care of. And then, again, we understand that this can be an added cost. It could be, in some situations, a completely revamp of the business. We do recognize that that'll take time. We are proposing a one-year amortization period to come into compliance with the new code. One thing that this proposed ordinance does is it separates the wrecker service and impound yards from the rotation. It is possible that we could have a wrecker service and impound yard that is not on the rotation. Perhaps they don't want to be on the rotation. And we feel like those are two separate things. So, we would propose preparing or adopting a rotation agreement, which would be a separate agreement that the wrecker service would sign and that the Moore Police Department would sign that lays out all of the expectations and parameters of being on the rotation. So, one thing that we would propose is to limit it to five wrecker services. Currently, that number is seven. And looking at what other metro area communities have as far as number of wrecker services, we are by far the most wrecker services that we allow within the city limits on rotation. Midwest City just allows one and Edmund and Norman limit theirs to, I believe it's four. So, and even Oklahoma City, I think, just has four. So, there's really, I understand that seven was probably a number that was generated because we had seven in existence at the time the ordinance was adopted. And I'm not proposing to eliminate anyone from the wrecker service rotation log at this time. What would happen is we would just not fill those spots as wrecker services dropped off. Okay, so we're not proposing to kick anyone off currently. And one of the things that we do get citizen complaints about, mainly through the Police Department, is the charging of different fees for the service of the wreckers. There is what we call a Title 42 fee that is charged whenever they start to do the paperwork to declare the vehicle abandoned. We would propose that the wrecker services would not be allowed to charge for this fee for a period of three days. That would allow the person to come back, retrieve their vehicle, and not be charged this fee. That would also exclude holidays and weekends. We would also have business office standards, so your business office would have to be onsite and it would have to meet all building codes and zoning ordinance. And then, another thing that the rotation log would require is an updated employee and equipment roster and there's a variety of different things, but these would be the main things that the Police Department has had problems with in the past. The other thing that the rotation log agreement would do is lay out a suspension and removal process. And again, it would be very similar or identical to the license suspension removal process. So a 10-day notice, a hearing in front of a panel that would be made up of various departments and the result could be tailored to match the severity of the infraction and also give conditions to get reinstated on the rotation. And some things that you could be removed or suspended for would be an expired city license or state license, violation of storage yard regulations, charging inconsistent fees for the Title 42, and no answer or late to scene for three occasions within a 30-day time period. That is the summary of the proposed code updates, just to give you an idea of the process that we went through. We did hold an informational meeting with the wrecker services on March 3 to review the proposed ordinance. We offered to take comments over a 10-day period and we received nine questions or comments through this 10-day period. Then we, as a city, sat down and went through each question and answered them. There were some questions where we did not think a change to the code was, the proposed code was warranted. There's a lot of instances where we did make changes. And the notice of this meeting, along with the finalized proposed ordinance and a list of the questions and the answers, were mailed to all the known wrecker services so they had an opportunity to know when this meeting was going to be and to come and speak if they wanted. So that was the process we went through and if you have any questions, I'm here, also the Police Department and City Attorney.
She said one comment about the Title 42 fee.
Yes.
So, three days. So there were, I guess, some wrecker companies just doing that automatically? Because three days is pretty quick.
Yes, so there are some wrecker companies that would start the Title 42 fee immediately. And it is a process. We do understand it is a detailed process and you are required to start it within a certain period of time by state rules. But we feel like that the individual should at least have a chance to come get their car before that fee is started. But the most important thing really is to have all the wrecker services charge for the same service. So we were getting people who would have different fees from different wrecker services and they would start comparing and, you know, it kind of leaves the city in alert to try to explain why that is.
And just, I know that there are instances where vehicles will be impounded from roadway, just to clear the roadway and, yeah, the owner goes to pick up their car and they're having to possibly pay this additional fee. So, that's good. I'm glad that's in there.
So how many people do we have licensed at this very moment?
I believe that a couple might have gotten licensed since we started this process.
I think about a total of five right now.
Five?
Five licensed. Yes.
Well, you can cut the rotation down to five then instead of seven. We have a couple people signed up. We have several people signed up on a lot of stuff tonight. So we're going to enforce the five-minute rule. And the first one on the list here is Anthony Rezar. I hope I said that right. If you would, come on down to the front and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anthony Rezar. My address, 3016 Northeastern Avenue is the location of the wrecker service. To start out, we've owned the wrecker service since 2008. Up until a couple of years ago, we had a meeting once a month with the Police Department and went over issues of the wrecker service and doing business with the city. And that's kind of fallen off. We haven't done that in several years. And this was all kind of thrown on us as a surprise when we got the letter to show up for the meeting back at the beginning of March. There's some things in here that we've discussed and really haven't got a very good answer on it. One of the things is almost all wrecker services have a repair shop and a wrecker service combined together. Their businesses kind of go hand in hand with each other. And with their proposal, they're talking about eliminating one or the other at that same location. And that's going to put several businesses completely out of business if you force them to remove half of their business that they have. In addition to that, there's some language in here that says we are going to be forced to take credit cards. And credit cards have been a problem in the past because the person who is the owner of the car is not the one authorizing the tow of that vehicle. So they can call their credit card company and decline the charges. And we've had several situations where we're even still to date fighting trying to get those charges back because the owner said, "I didn't authorize the tow. It was towed by somebody else." So the credit card company has reversed those charges. Well, they want us to take these credit cards as part of the business. You know, they're requiring us to do that and that has become an issue. Some of the other things that, as far as the storage facility, we have an eight-foot site-proof fence. We have it broke up in sections in the back because we have a storage for impounded vehicles. We have a storage location for cars that are being worked on and then we have a location for cars that are coming up for auction. So, I feel like if we could have all sat down and talked about this instead of just throwing rules out there without our input, we could have done a better job of this. That's pretty much everything that I have on top of my head at this time.
Did you submit any questions to?
I did. Several of the responses that we got back are my wording, word for word, like they copied and pasted and sent it back out.
I have a question about the credit card service. So if my car gets towed, I'm parked illegally and they tow it, how do you charge my credit card? I'm trying to explain like how...
When the person came in to pick up the car, they used the credit card.
And then they call after they pick it up and cancel the card?
And after they picked up the car, then they called the credit card company and said, "I didn't authorize this."
Okay. That makes sense. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
It's an after-the-fact type deal.
Right, right.
So how do you do it now?
We're cash-only.
Cash-only?
Cash-only. And we're fortunate enough, we're real close to an ATM and we've even talked about finding out what the situation is to put an ATM on-site to where we could just have them pull cash out of an ATM. But taking the credit cards actually creates an issue for us.
Elizabeth, do you know what other cities do as far as credit cards? Do they have any, how do they require payment cash or leave it up to the vendor?
That's one question that we didn't ask. Our discussion with the Police Department about the credit card issue is that most people don't have that amount of cash on them. So whenever they go to a business, they assume that they'll be taking credit cards. So when they find out that they need cash and they go to an ATM, sometimes that means that they have to go, I don't know how far away, but they might not come back right away. That means that the wrecker service gets to charge another fee for coming back on-site to release the vehicle. So you're really getting charged twice for them to come back to then collect the cash and release it.
If I may elaborate on that, the fee for coming back is only an after-hours fee outside of business hours. During business hours, they don't get charged a fee for showing up at the property.
So, this is kind of an example along with that. We do an architecture tour at my job and we have people that go on the tour, purchase their ticket through a credit card, go on the tour, and then call the credit card company afterwards and say, "We didn't authorize that charge." And you're absolutely right, they reverse the charge.
Yes.
Because you can't prove that, I mean, and so I sympathize with that, actually, so.
On the, how many of the wrecker services also have a repair shop that work a companion that this would affect?
I also spoke with the Police Department about that. As far as we are aware, Elite Wrecker Eastern is the only business that has a repair shop with a certificate of occupancy approved with it. There's no other shop that we're aware of that has, you know, an actual repair shop where somebody could come in and bring their car and have it repaired.
And so, but that would, this would apply to Elite, that they wouldn't be grandfathered in this process?
That's correct. And, you know, if you have a second, I can show you some pictures of what we have to...
Yeah, if you don't mind.
These are the complaints that come into us. David, could you please pull up the Word document? And we've been fighting this for some years now. We've had several meetings with Elite's wrecker, it used to be Cowpox. They're actually overflowing their wrecked vehicles onto property that's Zone C2, which does not allow wreckers. We've asked them to scale that back and it ebbs and flows. And as you can see, this is just looking from Eastern. And you can see that there are, you know, wrecked vehicles. There's, you know, we don't really, I wasn't out there, so I don't really know exactly what those materials are. But this is what's on Eastern Avenue. And I usually don't get these kind of complaints from other wreckers. And I believe that it is solely an issue of not having enough room in their storage yard. And if they could start to remove some of those vehicles out of their storage yard, we wouldn't have these issues.
So, in this situation, they just wouldn't be allowed to tow on behalf of the city, correct? They can operate, of course...
In this situation, if this ordinance is passed, they would have several issues they would have to deal with. The first would be having the business located on the same lot. The second would be having all of these vehi- The second would be having all of these vehicles outside of a fence. They would need to all be inside a fence. All of the materials would have to be cleaned up, there could only be employee vehicles outside of the fence.
And that's just in general, even without towing for the city?
That's correct.
Correct, okay.
That's correct.
And is this your business?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay, all right.
What's all that stuff by the can, the storage?
Those are cores that are being returned back to specific vendors that come by and pick up after there's a repair done. It could be like a bad transmission that was pulled out waiting for them to come back, or an engine, or whatever the case may be.
My concern is affecting someone's livelihood in a huge way.
One of the questions I have for this, since you brought that up, is, obviously, she came out and took pictures today, and half, well, I'm gonna say, I've got nine employees, so nine of those cars are employees' vehicles. There are some cars that are there for repair. There's some of the cars that are parked outside waiting to be picked up by insurance companies or things like that. The repair side of this business is no different than Service King or GNG down the street that has a hundred cars in their parking lot at any given time. Service King is on the frontage road of I-35, and if I would have went over there and took pictures, they would have looked just like this, but they're not here being represented or being reprimanded or anything like that because it's a normal cause of business.
It's not attached to a wrecker service, yeah. Collision Works is another one in town that has, I don't know, probably fifty cars parked in grass in front of the building and everything, and it does concern me that just because Collision Works doesn't tow, you know, they can, they can do that, and then he wouldn't be able to unless he gave up the towing side.
So I will say, this is board two, and I, this is probably the second-most call I get, is complaints about, about the, about the site, outside of people wanting sidewalks. Now, it hasn't been as bad in the past probably couple months, but, I mean, on a regular basis, because there's so many, and then it's the neighborhoods over there, and so that's a little bit different too, that the others aren't in a residential area, which obviously this was here before residential area, I get that, but it's still, it's a, it's a tough dilemma.
Is there any way to make them, you know, put up the fencing and everything, but grandfather them in the one or the other option? That's what's catching me here.
Yes, you know, this is a proposed ordinance, so you can choose to do all of the proposal or some of it. One thing that could happen is to make sure that the business that has an occupancy permit today could physically separate the vehicles. So we would know which vehicles belong to the tow company and the impound yard, and which vehicles belong to the repair service. That would make our job a lot easier, so we could answer citizens' questions when they call in.
So he could still operate as normal, of course, you would have to put up fencing.
Right.
But then, just as long as he separates the vehicles on what was towed in versus what he's repairing, which doesn't seem too cumbersome, but that would give him the leeway to continue business as usual.
That's correct. Another thing that could happen, you know, if you wanted to consider this, would be to look at the amortization period. We have it currently at one year, you could make that any period of time.
Make it a longer time.
Whether it's two years, three years, whatever you prefer. You know, the hope is that then when the citizens call to complain, we can give them an answer as to when improvements could expect to be made.
What are y'all's thoughts on just?
I think, is there somebody else I need to speak to?
Well, yeah, we exceeded the five minutes on here.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's let the other, let's let whoever else is here to speak, and then let's talk about it a little more.
Can I touch one based on the Title 42 fees before?
Sure.
The Title 42 fees are not consistent between all the wrecker services. The Title 42 has a procedure that has to be done, and one, the very first thing is obtain registration from the tax commission or whatever state the vehicle came from, and notify that person that their vehicle is impounded. That procedure is in case the owner of the car was not driving it at the time it got impounded, so they get notified immediately. There's a fee for that. We have to get a registration, there's certified mail, there's a document we have to prepare for.
What's y'all's fee?
Well, each, the certified mail has a fee of nine dollars and fifty cents. The document is called a possessory lien, it's a twenty-dollar per person that we have to notify, and then the printout from the state varies state to state. Some states are ten bucks, some states are fifty dollars, so that all varies. Some wrecker services lump all this into one fee called Title 42, and the corporation commission says you can contract that out, and then there is a percentage we can mark it up for profit. So there's probably some wrecker services that are charging upwards of two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to do this process. Because the printout is the first thing we have to do, notify the person that's there, some people are saying, "I started the Title 42 process, I'm entitled to all of it." We don't do that. We have a fee for these first things, and if somebody picks up the car before the thirty days, we don't charge them the rest of it. At day thirty-one, when Title 42 notice of sale is mailed out, then all those fees get applied.
So there could be a fee that is perhaps in the ordinance, Elizabeth, that covers that? Could, could there be a set fee that they're allowed to charge? Are we not allowed to, you know what I mean, that they're, whatever that is, forty bucks, fifty bucks, whatever?
And the reason why there's a broad range is most cars have one or two people, if they're married, in a lien holder that you have to notify. There's some cars that have changed hands or have judgments against them, and you have to notify ten people. And so, at ten people, you're looking close to four-hundred bucks just to notify everybody involved. Well, that's out of our control, we have no control over that. It's just whatever documents are tied to that car.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
To answer your question, yes. If the council would like to go that direction, what we can do is get with the police department and the wreckers and establish the initial fee that would be charged, you know, across the board to start the process, in which case, you know, then if the owner came and got their vehicle within three days, five days, whatever that timeframe is, the rest would not be charged.
Wouldn't really the only change come from the markup? Because isn't it the same cost, the twenty-dollar title fee notifying each person? Isn't that the same cost from wrecker service to wrecker service? So the only difference should be the markup?
It should be the way that they perceive the Title 42. Like I said, some places consider, as soon as you get the printout, "I started the Title 42," so they charge the maximum right off the bat. We don't do that at our location.
But it's, it would be the same.
In, in the end, it would be the same if the car's sat there for thirty days.
Okay, so really what we're talking about is the markup from each business to business that we need to look at, because the controlled costs are gonna be the same from business to business.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, was there someone else signed up?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for answering our questions.
And just to reiterate what I said, if we could get back to doing the monthly meeting, it was about an hour long with the police department, we went over a lot of these issues years ago and had it rectified instead of to this point.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brian Herron?
My name is Brian Herron, and I own American Tow and Recovery on Shields. This is my twenty-third year here in Moore. I started off as Pinky Tow back in ninety-nine, and now here I am. Does anybody know how we get paid? Nothing, no one's ever talked about this. Does anybody know how we get paid?
Fees for picking up cars and charging fees.
So I send my guys out to work these accidents and all this, and we're considered first responders. That's why it was really hard to hear whenever we couldn't park at home anymore. You know, I, I get it, and I was here at that meeting back then, and I know what the deal was. The councilman was living next door to Ashley's Wrecker, which they were up and down all night because they ran AAA's. And so he didn't like it, and they got into a big feud, and next thing we know, none of us can park at home. I don't understand that, because, you know, if we're supposed to get up and be at an accident within thirty minutes, there's no way. I get it. I used to drive from Santa Fe and Nineteenth all the way to my office at Shields. You gotta turn off the alarm, get the gates open, get the truck out, warm it up, pull it out, and then shut everything down and get to where I'm supposed to be, and you can't do it. You know? And it got to the point where the officers were getting upset because we would take forever to get there. And they finally said, "Just park at home, we're not gonna, we're not gonna say nothing, just park at home." You know? If, if somebody complains, then we'll deal with it then. And that's what we should do, you know? I live in the neighborhood, they probably wouldn't like it if I parked a truck in my driveway, you know? That's fine. I've had drivers that parked it down the street or around the corner somewhere that we can know that it's pretty close, you know? But I don't, you know, I don't wanna get anybody in trouble over it, but we're supposed to be first responders, we're supposed to be there, and that's what we do, is try to get there as quick as we can. We can't do it when we do that. But back to my original statement was, we go out to these accidents, and I pay my guys to do this. Tony does the same thing. We're out all this money, and then we gotta start the Title 42 process. Like you said, nine dollars and something a letter, you know, my bill's outrageous for this stuff. We see each other at the post office all the time, you know? We, we have to go by the book and do our thing, and in doing so, I'm in the hole several thousand dollars each month, you know? The overhead is just ridiculous in this business. And, you know, the reason these guys are doing what they're doing is they can't make money doing what they're doing. So they're price gouging the heck out of people. They've been doing this for years, you know, and the police department would call me and say, "Hey, can they do this? Can they do it?" No, they can't. You know, but that's what they're doing. You know, they're just price gouging everybody and trying to get five hundred, we were paying five hundred dollars to, on a, on a car that had the floor dry, they were charging a hundred dollars a bag, you know? And the corporation commission's supposed to keep up with that, and so all we would do is just, you know, try to turn them in and say, you know, "Those are the ones making us look bad." You know, "We're going by the book." It's just real hard, if they don't pick up that car, the insurance company, I've got one right now, that the insurance company junked the title, it was a stolen recovery, I house all the District Twenty-One Task Force stuff, I have since two thousand and nine. So for three counties, we have all the drug seizure stuff and everything at my place. This car was jumped, the title, they junked the title, it's got forty thousand miles on it, not a dent on it, it's like brand new. But they junked the title because they couldn't find it. Well, now we found it, and so what does the insurance company do? They just leave it with me. They don't pick it up, they don't pay my bill, they don't do anything. So now I go ahead and title, title 42 it, and I get a junked title, I can't do anything with this car. So I'm fighting with them now, asking them to turn it over, you know, there's nothing wrong with this car. But because they didn't wanna mess with it, they, they just left it to us. They know we're not gonna go sue them, we don't have the money to, or the time, you know? And so we just try to sit back and do what we can, and just, I met with the police office, the police department about, oh, maybe two or three weeks ago, and I walked in and handed my insurance bill. It's fifteen thousand dollars a month. Fifteen thousand a month, just for my trucks, and because I have to insure everything on my lot, you know?
You're at time, sir.
There's a reason why everybody's doing what they're doing, like I said, it's price gouging because they can't make money at it. You know, to try to cut it short for you, the police department, I told them, you know, "This is what I ran for you last year, a hundred and thirty-eight calls." A hundred and thirty-eight calls in one year. I ran two thousand AAA's last month in March, twenty-one hundred to be exact, and it's just AAA. You can't make money doing, doing this, and they, you know, they want us to drop everything, be there, we'll do it, we're there, but we can't make any money doing it. Nobody can. If, if, if they do a contract with one, maybe two, so they can back each other up, that's a different story. You know, then you're committed, and you're gonna get all the calls, so you know, you know, you can, you can make money at it. But I'm losing money, you know, messing with it.
So are you saying that if we put these ordinances in place, it's going to make it even harder?
Why should I be on rotation? I mean, seriously, and I was told that, oh, there you are. Are they, if it's passed, we have to pave the front? There can't be gravel?
No, if you're pre-existing, it can be gravel.
Okay, I was making sure. Then I'm okay with that then. But, yeah, I mean-
Are there pieces of it that you like and don't like? You, so-
Yeah, we need to get rid of the price gougers. It's all there is to it. I mean, we've been saying that for years.
So this, if we passed it, but we brought in-
It's gonna help.
-the flat Title 42 fee, then that would help eliminate a lot of the price gouging?
Yes.
Yes.
And there is no fee for Title 42, by the way.
Right.
Charge whatever they want. They just can't put it on that tow ticket. They can put it on a separate receipt, and it's legal, but they can't put it on the tow ticket because it's not regulated by the state. So there's no fee for Title 42 through the state.
Just whatever markup.
Right, it's, well, they charge for the letters and the postage and stuff like that, and you can mark that up.
And then they're marking it up, right.
Yeah.
Did you submit any questions to, during the ten-day period? Were you able to submit any of your questions or?
I did, I sat down with them, we discussed it a little bit. I mean, this is, we've been doing this for years.
How much of your business is from the police department versus just private?
Maybe five percent.
How much?
Maybe five percent.
Okay.
Okay.
But, I mean, it wasn't like that, you know? They wanted to do something, but they kept going back and forth. We actually wrote a contract up, we've got it, and I found it actually the other day in two thousand and four.
So you think fi- five on the rotation is too many?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And I don't think it should be just one either, you gotta have somebody back each other up.
Right, 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 right.
It's doable, we've been talking about it for years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else signed up on this?
There's nobody else signed up.
Well, Elizabeth, I hate to do this, because I know you've put a lot of work into it, but I would make a motion that we table it.
Yeah, I would second that, and I appreciate all the work you put into Elizabeth.
I'm sorry to do that to you, but I just think-
That's a little more information.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Would you like to see this come back in a revised form?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think let's talk about it a little bit more.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I think, do we need to do that here? I think my, my big issue is I don't, like, you know, the situation with Elite, making them choose one or the other. I, I do like the idea of, you know, I've gotten complaints, it's not even my reward, so I hear you, Melissa, I can't imagine you and Mark's phone, but I have had calls on this specific property, I pass it every time I head to my office, and the fence, I think, would remedy all of that, pretty much. I mean, do you agree, or?
Yeah, I think, you have to put behind the fence, and I mean, I think that's-
Okay, but, but to, to make them choose one or the other, I find, for me, is this councilperson problematic to, to his business.
I'm sorry, I'm-
Oh, go ahead.
In this example, do they own the lot that's C2?
Yes, it is.
They, they purchased it not knowing that they could not use it based on the zoning, and I have recommended that they either-
Apply for-
Apply for rezoning, or-
That would be wise.
And, I mean, I haven't heard anything for some-
Okay, thank you, because I think that's probably the-
Yeah, apply, apply for rezoning.
I think, yeah, I think there's a solution in there where we can make it, make it look better, and hopefully make it good for everybody.
I like the solution you suggested of just splitting-
Splitting it, yeah.
Elizabeth, thank you, because I know you all put a lot of work in on this.
Yeah, and I appreciate it, because, like I said, I'm the one that calls Elizabeth the most about it, so.
We have a motion to table in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Real quick, and I would agree with what we've talked about, but as you proceed forward and work with the other wrecker companies in our community, just the overall appearance and, you know, not picking on this, but that's the picture that's in front of us, and, you know, those things, I think we as a council need to do something to help there be a good relationship with the residential and the business, and I think that we can do that through some of this zoning and just encourage businesses to maintain their, their properties. Thank you.
And thank you for coming out tonight.
Yes, thank you.
And expressing your concerns, we appreciate it, Will.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll have more discussions. Thank you.
Go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item is tabled. Item number four is consider approval of ordinance number one zero zero three dash twenty-two amending Part twelve, Chapter three, Article, I can't read the, Article C of the Land Development Code by adding new Section twelve dash five oh five, providing for the closing of a public way in the Walmart addition and re, uh, excuse me, retaining the absolute right to reopen the public way, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Mayor and council, this ordinance is, um, before you today because Walmart is preparing to do an addition onto their building, uh, to the east, uh, which, uh, they are looking at revamping their, um, their grocery pickup, um, operations. And the addition was going to be placing part of a pickup system that is very interesting, it's a conveyor belt that goes overhead, but it'll be over an easement. Um, so the Walmart addition ha, or the Walmart has, um, has since rerouted those water and sewer lines. Um, and so these easements are no longer needed. Um, this will be the first step, um, to actually vacating those easements, so they can build their new addition on top of these easements. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Thank you, thank you both, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of ordinance number one zero zero four dash twenty-two amending Part twelve, Chapter four, Article G Landscape Regulations, Section twelve dash four five one through twelve dash four five six, by adding the applicability of, I don't think that's a word, anyway, applicability of regulations increasing the amount of open space required, reducing the amount of planting areas for parking lot trees, providing alternative for required parking lot landscape islands, and requiring mixture of trees and shrub species, and deleting Sections twelve dash four five seven, and placing Section in reserve, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Mayor and council, several months ago, um, staff was asked to review the landscaping regulations, uh, to compare it to other peer cities. Uh, we selected peer cities both within the metro area and a little bit outside the metro area. And our findings were that the total tree requirements, regardless of which city you're in, are, um, fairly, um, consistent. And we are not below what I would consider to be the average on that. Um, however, the amount of open space required, that, that we require, uh, at five percent is, uh, at least half of what other peer cities require. Most peer cities require anywhere from ten to thirty percent open space. Um, and also the peer cities emphasize a quality of design, uh, requiring the landscaping regulations to be completed by a landscape architect and generally reviewed by a landscape architect that's on staff. And, and we don't have, um, a landscape architect on staff. And so, and the proposed update would include increasing the, um, open space requirement for landscaping from five percent to ten percent. Um, and re, in, in exchange, you know, uh, want to make sure that businesses don't feel like they're being, um, asked to do, um, too much. Um, we would reduce the amount of planting areas within the parking lots from one hundred square feet to eighty square feet, or is approved by the Community Development Director. There are some tree species that just don't need a hundred square feet, um, in a parking lot, so I don't feel it is, uh, necessary to have that in the code. It would also give an alternative for parking lot landscaping islands in industrial areas, uh, where they usually do not want to put landscaping islands because of the big trucks. Uh, we could then replace, um, or substitute, um, a sprinkler system and three additional trees and two shrubs per island that they wish to, uh, remove. And that would give more trees out front where the visual impact would be higher. Uh, and, um, deleting the requirement of separation between the building and the parking lot by a ten-foot landscape strip is currently in the code, I would propose deleting that uh, because, um, the businesses don't put that in. And, uh, the code currently reads as feasible and it is never feasible according to the businesses. Um, the proposed updates as it rega, in regards to design, um, really focus on getting a variety of different trees and shrubs. Uh, we would set the minimum gallons, uh, for shrubs at three gallons in size, currently we don't have a minimum size for shrubs. Uh, define trees in parking lot to medium and large shade trees, oftentimes developers want to put small trees in the parking lot, which create a lot of problems with, um, overgrowing into parking spaces, and then they eventually will take the trees out. Uh, include percentage limits for tree and subs- shrub species to increase diversity. One thing that I have noticed, um, with local builders is that they tend to select all of one tree. Um, and I am thinking right now of a specific situation on Northeast Twenty-seventh Street, uh, where I believe that all the trees will die, um, this summer. And they will be left with no trees because they are all one of one species. The code currently does allow that, but I would propose that we, um, try to make the species diversified as far as, um, the trees, um, both during, of the species and whether or not they're evergreen versus deciduous, um, and medium and small trees. Uh, some miscellaneous updates that I believe are warranted, um, increasing the caliper of existing trees eligible for credit to a minimum of four inch caliper. And any trees that are planned within the right of way, at least, must be at least ten feet from a water meter. And that trees planted under overhead utilities cannot be more than twenty-five feet tall at maturity. Um, I believe that these improvements to the code will make a visual impact over time. And if you have any questions or concerns, I would be happy to answer those.
I, thank you and Brooks, thank you both for working so hard on this and getting it done for us, thank you.
In the future, when you plant these trees, you're gonna have to have a, uh, follow-up to, uh, basically, you know, say that this is a carbon reduction, and you're gonna have to know which trees are available to reduce the carbon emissions from every single vehicle that the city uses, including the, uh, trash trucks. So you might start looking at that.
Okay.
Do the.
That's a big job.
It's huge. Do the, uh, do we have any requirements for, I guess, developers replacing trees that die within a certain timeframe?
Yes, um, this, the current code, um, does require landscaping inspections, but, uh, it doesn't cite the code that would allow us to issue citations. So, um, I have added in the code citation that would allow us to write those tickets. Uh, and, um, just to be totally transparent, it's much more difficult to write a ticket to a, um, national chain where the CEO might be in New Jersey or California, rather than a local, um, business owner who owns their, their building. But we, we are planning on doing regular landscape inspections with this, uh, ordinance update.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, thank you both, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on this? And Elizabeth, thank you for all your work on this project, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would you call for the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider approval of a contract with, uh, Brass Fields Landscaping LLC in the amount of eight thousand three hundred ninety dollars for flowerbed maintenance of selected city-owned properties.
Mayor and council, uh, items six and seven are similar request, uh, Brass Field Landscaping will provide bi-weekly maintenance to many of our, uh, city-maintained flowerbeds throughout the city. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Second to motion.
Okay, we have a motion in three seconds?
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Somebody?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider approval of a contract with KNG Home and Landscaping by Design in the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars for flowerbed maintenance of a selected city-owned properties, this is parks and recreation, and we better have the best-looking flowerbeds.
A motion to approve?
Second.
And thank you both, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider adoption of Resolution number one nine dash two two, removing certain fees and charges for the rental and usage of parks and recreation facilities.
Mayor and council, we would ask that items eight and nine both be tabled so we can bring them back at a later date.
Okay.
Make a motion to table.
Make him second the motion that Jason made.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second for to table item nine, or excuse me, item eight, would you call for the vote for tabling?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item is tabled, item nine is consider Resolution number twenty dash twenty-two, adopting the schedule of fees and charges effective upon approval and remaining in effect until modified, amended, or repealed, and repealing prior inconsistent fees.
Make a motion that we table this item.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a sec, uh, to, uh, table this item, would you call for the vote, table?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item is tabled. Item number ten is consider approval of a budget supplement to budget funds and related expenses for the two thousand twenty-two Geo Bond, two thousand twenty-two sales tax note, stop-loss and property insurance proceeds, fire applicant testing, and JAG grant.
Mayor and council, we are requesting a budget amendment for the following. First, to budget funds received from the issuance of the two thousand twenty-two Geo Bond for street repair and design and the animal shelter. Second is an amendment to budget additional funds received from stop-loss insurance and property insurance proceeds, and the related expenses for health claims and property repairs. Third, we are budgeting revenue received from fire applicants for testing and the related test printing expense. Fourth is an amendment to budget funds we will receive from the issuance of the two thousand twenty-two EDA sales tax note for financing real property related to the urban renewal project. The fifth and final amendment is to budget revenue and expenses related to the Police Department's Justice Assistance Grant for ten body cameras. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Adam did.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, thank you. We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number eleven is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Works, or Moore Public Works Authority meeting held April fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of nine hundred fifteen thousand four hundred eighty dollars eighteen cents.
Motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you both, we have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number twelve is a consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held April fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars fifty-two cents.
Well, make a motion that we approve the consent docket.
All right, thank you, thank you both, we have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie? Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Louis Williams? Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here. Item fourteen is the consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And B, receive and approve the minutes of the special Moore Economic Development Authority meeting hel- held April fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We had the motion and a second, and you can call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
At this time, we will recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that all the members that were present before are still present. And item, uh, number fifteen point one is an addendum. I'm sorry.
Citizen, yeah.
We'll do the, we'll do the others first, I'm sorry. Fifteen A is Citizens Forum for Items, not on the agenda. There's no one signed up, I don't believe.
Yeah, there's one.
Oh, wait, wait, there is, I'm sorry. Oh, there we go. Tanner? Would you like to speak?
Sorry about that, I listed in the wrong file.
Oh, no, no, no worries. Uh, I'd like to pass these out.
Sure. Yeah. Hand them here and I'll pass them down. Thanks, Tanner.
My name's Tanner Nair, uh, live at three oh nine South Patterson Drive, Moore, Oklahoma. I'm wanting to talk to you today, I know, uh, Mr. Elmore, Elmore talked to you all about the, uh, Turnpike the other week. And I just want to second his motion, uh, that we would really like the Moore City Council to stand with Norman uh, and oppose the Turnpike. Uh, the first thing in there is a letter from a lady, uh, I spoke with today. And her farm is out on, uh, the far side of Indian Hills Road, uh, where the proposed Turnpike is coming through. Uh, I'll let y'all read that on your own time. My concerns are, this affects Moore in a very, uh, profound way. As you all know, uh, Indian Hills is one of the roads that everybody uses to get around Nineteenth Street. When Nineteenth Street's congested, they move over to Thirty-fourth, they move down to Indian Hills to get around all that traffic. Uh, if that Turnpike comes in, they're gonna have to put stoplights down at each one of those roads, which is gonna congest traffic even more. So now our congestion on Nineteenth Street's gonna be even worse because people can't get around it in a very efficient manner. And as more people get congested and more, our alternatives to go to, uh, Norman get less. So that's gonna force more people onto I thirty-five. And, which is the exact opposite of what they claim they're trying to do. By connecting it to Tri-City, everybody from Tri-City, from Tuttle, they're gonna come straight over to I thirty-five. So our traffic's gonna get even worse as that, uh, continues. I've always considered, like Norman, one of our sister cities. Uh, a lot of their kids, uh, are in the Moore School District. Uh, we share a VOTech together. Uh, people go down there to eat, day in, uh, day in and day out, you know? So whatever affects Norman affects us, um, here in Moore. And their drinking water is one of the things that this is, Turnpike's really gonna hurt. Uh, you can see the map I have there, and it is, uh, going right through the watershed of Lake Thunderbird. And it's crossed, you know, a rough estimate, thirty times just on the east-west connector, and another thirteen for the north-south, uh, on the south, uh, southern extension. And with all that pollution, it's really gonna hurt, uh, the drinking water in Norman, which affects Midwest City and Dell City as well. Uh, then you add in, uh, they're supposed to buy, a rough estimate, about four thousand acres off of people. And let's just say half of that is paved with road, now you got a flooding issue. And you, we all know the road, uh, the waterway by Walmart, uh, and Veterans Park already floods enough. Now if you back that water up, it's gonna flood worse. And so, I really just, uh, wanted to highlight, it's more than just an issue. And so I'd really just wanted to highlight, it's more than just an issue with Norman. It, it affects us here in Moore. The other thing, I can speak to this personally because our land is out in Ward Five where we were planning to build. And the pain and the suffering that everybody's going through in Norman, it's, it's crazy. We don't sleep at night. You wake up and your mind's just going because you know you're about to lose everything you have worked your life for. And so it won't do much, but it will show solidarity with those in Norman. It will help the cause and help those people. And you see there, my daughter is in those photos and my wife. That's why I'm here talking because this turnpike's about to take away the, the future we had planned for our daughter. We want her to grow up out in the country, out on some farmland, and now the turnpike's slated to go right through it because we kept trees on our land. So I just ask you to consider that. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I always tell people I'm opposed to all turnpikes. And to start that off with, with this council, we still have not been presented a plan by the turnpike. That comes up, I think, on Thursday. So we'll address it then.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any items from the city council?
I just, the, you know, it's always something. But that rail fence from Fort, I don't know what's happening, but
Oh, yeah.
People are not paying attention or what, but if, I guess you're aware of all that?
Yes.
We're working on, okay.
Okay. It's great. I've had a lot of calls, piggybacking off of Tanner's discussion about the turnpike authority in my ward. There's of course a lot of opposition to it. I've had a lot of requests that we formally oppose it by, you know, as other governing bodies have done. So just letting you guys know the feedback of what I'm hearing. I'm sure you guys are hearing similar things, but from Ward One, you know, it's, it's a hotter topic that I've gotten a lot of calls on.
It's kinda like the city council of Moore trying to change the speed limit in Norman.
Yeah.
They don't want us involved on anything other than this turnpike issue because now it's a big deal. And it's like, it's not really our place to determine policy for the city of Norman. You know, even though I'm opposed to turnpikes, I, I just don't, you know, the number one road that connects the number one city and the number two city in the state of Oklahoma is a turnpike. It also connects Lauton to Oklahoma City. And it's like, that's just wrong. It's bad for business, it's bad for everybody except the people that own the bonds. So I don't think we should have them at all. But I don't know that there's any special need for us to come up with a, you know, we're gonna be against the toll road people. And when, they already know my position is, I'm against it. So. And we have to deal with them every day on road repair.
Go on the ground, that's the solution.
Do what?
Everybody, makes everybody happy. Go on the ground.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any items from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor and council, a couple of things. But first, I'd like to invite Chief Herbster to the podium to give us an update. We, City Moore hosted the Fire Chiefs Association Conference last week, and so I'd like Chief Herbster to tell us a little bit about that.
Thanks, sir.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, cool. I like these historical.
What I shared with you is just a copy of our program we had at the conference. Got a lot of history in there about the Moore Fire Department, and most of that was gained from our first paid fire chief, James Clark. So it's good information in there, but as Mr. Mitchell said, I was honored to host the Hundredth Annual Oklahoma Fire Chiefs Association Conference last week here in Moore. As part of my duties as president was to host our annual conference, and it just happened to be the one-hundredth anniversary. So I appreciate all the support from Mr. Mitchell and the mayor and all of you on hosting that. It was a great turnout. We had a record number of vendors. We had over fifty-two vendors inside, plus nine more outside. We had about a hundred attendees from across the state, fire chiefs from across the state show up. We hosted the conference at Moore-Norman Technology Center on Penn just because of the, the size that we needed and location. All the money we spent was inside the city of Moore. Our host hotel was here at Spring Hill Suites. We played golf out of Belmar. We had our banquet out of Belmar. We use a caterer, Michael's Catering here in Moore. So all of our money was here. We did everything except have our meeting here inside the city limits. And it was, again, we got tons of accolades and positive feedback for the conference and for our guys and all the work that they put in hosting this conference. And I think we got a lot of new fans for our city, so.
Well, thank you.
Just a little update on what we were able to do. And again, it was a great representation of our community and the city. We, also after the golf tournament, we hosted everyone to come eat dinner at Fire Station Number One. So Chet Thompson cooked a meal for about a hundred people that all got to eat dinner there at the fire station. So it's a great turnout, great event, and I thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Putting on a conference is a lot of work, so congratulations.
Hey, next meeting, would you wear your burgundy blazer? I will not make you, but you look good in this picture, and I was just asking.
Just a couple of other things. The budget meetings, individual budget meetings with the council members are this week. And Steve Eadie has tendered his resignation as our commissioner for the RTA. He has some other issues he needs to address and won't be able to devote the time to it. So, you know, any suggestions on a successor, we'd certainly like to have, and we'll hopefully have that position filled before too long.
Okay. I got this really nice annual report from the police department, too. He's good job on this.
Mm-hmm. Whoops.
All right. Anybody else? Item number sixteen is a German.
Well, fifteen point one.
Oh, oh, wait, sorry. I forgot about this. I was trying to put this off, I think. This is executive session fifteen point one. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes permits a public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss considering if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending court case number CJ two zero two-two dash three six four filed in Cleveland County Court by Buxton Law Group, filed on behalf of Barbara Calhoun against the city of Moore and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions, excuse me, actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four.
Make a motion we convene to executive session.
All right.
Second.
We got a second? Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
We've convened the executive session. Thank you.
What? Look at that.
Yep.
I know, and then he's down here.
Would you call the roll back, please?
Mark Ham?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here. We are reconvened from executive session.
And I have to put my glasses back on, sorry.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to proceed as directed.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number sixteen is adjournment.
So moved.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.